Good evening, everybody, and thank you for coming and welcome to the Good evening. Thank you for coming and welcome to the regular meeting of the planning board for Monday, January 7, 2013. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Brown. Mr. Colton Max.
Here.
Ms. Foye.
Here.
Ms. Bauer.
Here.
Mr. Hutt.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Torpe.
Reverend Wilson.
Present.
Ms. Gouha.
Mr. Allen.
Yeah.
And Mr. Goldstein.
Yes.
You know, there are seats in the front here if you want to come sit down.
We don't bite.
Pursuant to Section 5, Chapter 231, PL 1975, this is to state for the record that adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the public by posting and maintaining the annual notice of regular meetings on the bulletin board in village hall, by mailing the annual notice of regular meetings for 2013 to the South Orange Maplewood News Record and the Star Ledger in December 2012, and by filing said notice in the office of the village clerk. We have some miscellaneous administrative business to conduct, and then we will hear an application for completeness. And then we have two applications pending tonight. We're going to reverse the order. I don't know if anybody's grabbed an agenda, but we will hear first the case number 225, Sister Joan Repka. And I know we laid over, or we've heard previously, the Bianca's LLC, but we'll wrap that up tonight after the other case. So, our first bit of business is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held on December 3, 2012. Do I hear a motion for those? Do I second?
Mr. Chairman, before we vote on it, I have a few corrections, please revision.
Thank you.
Sorry. On the bottom of page three, it said Reverend Wilson has rescued herself, and I'm sure you have.
Recused.
But I think you meant recused.
Just on that a long time ago, right?
On page four at the top of the second paragraph, Mr. Torpe suggested that they use motion. I think the word we want there is censors in regards to the lighting.
Or detectors.
Or detectors, probably more likely. And in paragraph number five, in the second line, this was your comment, Trustee Bauer, relating to pervious pavers as opposed to payment. So, those are the corrections I would offer.
Okay, and thank you. We have a motion again. Let's do the motion again. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed?
I'm going to abstain.
And one abstention. Okay. Minutes passed. Thank you. Next, we have to elect officers for this coming year, 2013, the chairman and the vice chairman. I suppose we should do the chairman first, in which case
Can I start louder?
I will do that. Okay, sorry. Should be on. Is that better?
Good.
Good. Now, we have to move to elect officers for the coming year, 2013, the chairman and vice chairman. In order to do the chairman first, I think, Harold, you have to take over and ask for nominations, and, because I'm not supposed to do it.
Oh.
Okay.
Would anybody like to nominate somebody to be chair? Reverend Wilson?
I'd nominate Tom Hutt.
Second name? Okay. Do I hear any other nominations? Hearing none, can we have a vote? To all in favor of affirming Mr. Hutt as the chairman of the planning board for the year 2013, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Not allowed to vote, right?
I don't know.
Okay. Thank you very much, Board. I appreciate it. I'll try and serve you in the way I have in the past. I'll let you fill in the blank. As for vice chairman, we then need to elect a vice chairman. Do I hear any nomination?
Do you like to nominate Mr. Colton Max?
Mr. Colton Max, I hear a second. Any other nominations?
None.
All right, so we can vote on that for a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Harold. Thank you. You always serve me ably. Thanks. We also now have to publicly take an oath of allegiance of office. Patrick, can you, our council, lead us through that process?
Okay, the board member should have in front of them a copy of the oath, and if they all could just simply read it out loud on the record. One, two, three.
I solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and in this state under the authority of the people. I do further solemnly swear that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties as a member of the South Orange Planning Board according to the best of my ability.
So, before the end of the meeting, sign these and return them.
Please sign them and give them to
And this is just a random question. You're not all here for this oath, were you? No, I guess not. Okay. But it was exciting, I'm sure. Next, we will hear an application for completeness. This is case number 226, Seton Hall University, Block 1901, Lot 3, 400 South Orange Avenue. This application is for preliminary and final site plan. The applicant seeks to construct a new university center. Susan, can you comment on the completeness, or just summarize it for us, in your opinion?
Yes. In our completeness memo dated January 2, we recommend the application deemed complete for hearing, subject to granting of a number of submission waivers that are detailed in our memo based upon the application checklist. I would only note that, in addition, that checklist number 43, utility connections, and checklist number 53, circulation, some, if not all, the information has been submitted, but we would defer to the board engineer regarding those specific items.
Yeah, I agree. Those particular items, we probably should ask the applicant to provide more information regarding that, in particular, the utility connections, locations, things like that. But aside from that, I think the plans are substantially complete, and I think they can be deemed complete. I would just recommend that perhaps putting the condition on providing more information for item number 43, and, what was the other one?
Forty-three and
And fifty-three.
Okay. Meaning they should expect to provide that when they present?
Yeah, I think that it could be provided through testimony.
Okay.
Some of those things are details that sometimes get a little beyond the initial planning layout stages, and they may not have full detail yet, in particular, utility connections and things like that, until they get to that point where they're getting closer to construction.
So, there's no need to submit revised plans prior to next year?
No, I think if they can just provide testimony at the meeting that, you know, that they know where the locations are, they know where the connections are, they can address it at the meeting, I think that would be fine.
Good evening. I'm Nicole Dory. On behalf of the applicant, I just wanted to introduce myself, because I thought an issue was being raised, and we'd be happy to work with the board engineer to address any issues.
Okay. Board, do you have any comments on the completeness review?
Just one. Item number 17, which is the environmental impact assessment. Susan, you indicated you have no, you take no exception to granting of this waiver. Do I take that to mean overall, or just at this point for granting completeness?
Only for granting completeness. Obviously, if the board, during the course of the application, if the board finds that they need additional information, certainly you have the right to request that.
I just didn't know whether or not we would, you know, because you're talking about the demolition of a building, whether or not, you know, we'd want to know about whether there's asbestos, lead-based paint, things like that. So, I would like to see that before, preferably before the hearing.
Okay, we'd be happy to work with the board if there's any other issues. I'm not sure if it's limited to asbestos, or any other issues.
I don't know when it was constructed, so they may be, they may not be issues at all. I mean, you say they were constructed in the late 1980s or anywhere after that, then it's going to be no issue at all.
Yeah, we can provide further information to the board to determine whether that's required.
Thank you.
Michael.
I'd also make a recommendation that this be submitted to the environmental commission. I think it would fall under some of their jurisdiction, especially in view of the demolition and some of the other concerns. Further, just by way of statement, Langen Engineering, which is the applicant's engineer, I have used Langen Engineering in a past life. It will not prejudice me from looking at this application, but I thought it best to disclose it.
Okay. Thank you.
How long ago was that, Mr. Miller?
About 20 years. I retain them to do similar studies on the major project.
The university center that's being demolished, is that what I think of as the student center?
Yes, that's my understanding.
Yeah, that was definitely built way before '78, so presumably an asbestos survey has been done? Or will be done?
I will talk to the university. I'm not sure, but we can definitely find out and answer any questions that the board might have.
My first job was in that building in 1975, so
Does that cloud your judgment?
And it was not new then.
We weren't born.
All right.
It's a new year, Michael.
All right, so with that in mind, we could put a quick vote to judging that complete. I think we do a voice, a roll call.
Do we have a motion?
Or do we get a motion?
No, you didn't.
Thank you.
I move that the application be deemed complete, subject to the
What? Comments that we made.
Providing more information for the utility hookups, circulation, asbestos, environmental information, refer this matter to the environmental commission. Think that's it? Second. Couldn't have said it better.
Got a second?
Second.
Okay, can we, roll call?
Okay, Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Colton Max?
Yes.
Ms. Foye?
Yes.
Ms. Bauer?
Yes.
Mr. Hutt?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
And Mr. Goldstein?
Yes.
All right, thank you, Board. Thank you, Susan.
Thank you very much.
Okay, moving on, we are now going to hear case number 225, Sister Joan Repka. This is Block 416, Lot 3, 425 Skylan Road. It is a minor site plan. The applicant seeks the demolition of existing three-story residence backfill, regrading seed and hay site. We also should note that Daviana has arrived, and also Mr. Brown. Okay, thank you.
My name is Carlotta Bud. I represent Mary Lawn of the Oranges. And we're here strictly for a demolition permit. We do not know what we're going to do with the property, but this building is old and needs to be removed. It's primarily, the work has been done, other than the actual demolition itself. Everything has been disconnected. We're ready to demolish.
You might have to talk more directly to your microphone.
Is it not on?
No. It's on. She's like, talk.
You're, it's on, you just need to talk
I'm right on it. I can't talk any closer.
Maybe try a couple of inches.
I don't think it's
Yep. Okay.
Is it on?
Technology available to us.
Okay, sorry.
We have to do the best we can.
We're here for a demolition permit.
Okay.
We are here for nothing else. We do not know what the property is going to do after we're finished. We just wish to remove this building, and we need a permit, because it's over a certain amount of, certain amount of tonnage of, or cubic feet, I guess, of soil. I received today, yesterday, or I think yesterday, the second report from Susan Gruel's office, done by her assistant, I can't remember his name, but in it, she says it should go to the historical society, historical preservation, for a certificate of appropriateness. I do not think that is correct, because under, our application's been filed for quite a while, and under, it could be the site NJ SA 40, colon, 55D, dash, 10.5, we're subject only to the rules that were in effect at the time the application was submitted, other than if it's safety or health, which, of course, this is not in these cases. There was a historical preservation group established in midsummer, but we were not designated historical site until the meeting of December 10. On December 10, this and several other sites against our wishes, and I assume some of the other neighbors was designated historical site. I don't think this is an appropriate place for it to go, and I think we should be heard without that.
Okay. Thank you. Done?
For that, on that issue, that's
So, since that's the issue that's in front of us as well, we'll turn to Susan Gruel. Susan, if we could have your thinking on this matter, that would, we'd appreciate it. Perhaps you could also, for the benefit of the public and who's turned out in large numbers tonight, maybe also give somewhat of a historical framework of the components of this issue as well, establishment of the HPC, et cetera.
Okay, and I also, Board, and Mr. Chairman, would like to have Patrick Dwyer, the board attorney, weigh in on this, because many, some of the issues are legal in nature. I certainly have planning opinions, but they're mixed, and so whomever
Either way, you needed
Whomever would like
Sure. There may be a threshold issue at stake here, which has to do with completeness. It's been raised at the last hearing. There was an issue whether or not the board, which had not yet received a title report, and deemed its, when it deemed the application complete last hearing date, said we'd like to get a title report, we did receive an entitled opinion letter, and I did receive some title documents, and the board received those as well. I don't believe that, technically speaking, that's compliance with requirement for the checklist, which says affidavit, affidavit of title and a title report. What we have are deeds and some restrictive covenants. Now, putting aside for the moment whether or not they would affect an application either to demo or to build, which is a whole separate issue, just from a procedural standpoint, whether or not the board can go forward depends on whether or not the board believes what has been received is sufficient to satisfy the checklist, and whether or not it has been deemed complete.
You've received all the chain of title, and you've received the opinion of an attorney based on the chain of title. That's what you received from me.
You're right. We did receive an opinion, and received deeds and restrictive covenants.
Right.
It's not what I would recall a title report. There is no affidavit of title in there anywhere. So, from that aspect, there is a technical deficiency with regard to completeness.
Mr. Chairman, in addition to that, the, it was very clear that the application would be deemed complete, conditioned on the receipt of the title report 10 days before, and we did not, only not receive the title report, we didn't receive it 10 days before.
Yes, yes, you did.
Not the deeds and documents that I received last week.
It was sent to your secretary.
On December 21 was a letter that enclosed Mr.
Right.
Campbell's opinion letter
Right.
And his resume.
Right. And the report, and the attachments.
The attachments were received by me on December 28 in the afternoon.
But they were all in the, they were all in the Federal Express envelope that went to her.
You're referring to the letter dated December 21, 2012? Is this the letter?
Yes.
Okay, it was received in our office on December 26.
Something like that. So
So, I think the board has to determine whether or not what they've received was timely, and was it sufficient to satisfy the checklist?
It may, for the moment. There still is a legal question, is, does the applicant, if the application was received before the formation of the HPC, is that a fact, or is it not a fact? I mean, I think we need a ruling on that from council before we can even, or even be willing to discuss the title issue.
I think completeness is really jurisdictional. We have to resolve that first before we move on to that one.
Not only that, the bill that passed the legislature establishing time of application rather than time of decision, essentially, what used to be called time of decision, is silent on the issue of completeness. So, it's not only jurisdictional, but it's entirely up to us to determine when the application is complete and therefore submitted.
That's strictly for completeness. I was going beyond completeness.
We have to figure out completeness first.
If they're not complete, even now, today, the law is good and Sister Repka is incorrect, that the HPC ordinance and the local landmark ordinance designating their property came Certainly, it's my view that until something is deemed complete, and that includes the compliance with all the conditions, certainly express conditions, such as the motion at the last meeting, you know, time of application doesn't adhere.
The law says the time of application, however. The statute actually says the time of application.
That's correct, but the application has to be complete.
It just says the time of application.
I said it's silent on the issue of completion.
But it just says, if you made the application, which we have made, and
I guess we'll make precedent.
I've sent all the stuff to your board secretary. I don't know who else to send it to. I didn't know that I had to send it to each individual person, so that she would get it in plenty of time.
I think the question is less whether or not, I mean, if it was received by, it was received, correct? And we're talking about not just the opinion letter, but all the backup documents, which Patrick was referring. Is that correct?
No, the affidavit of title was never received.
All of the backup documents were with letters. Twenty copies of everything.
But that did not include an affidavit of title.
Of an opinion.
What I'm saying is, anything that they sent was sent prior to the 10 days. That's what I just want to understand. It's not like, Patrick was saying a moment ago, that he only received certain documents at a later date, but we, as a township, received them at, before 10 days. I mean, that's what I'm trying to, putting aside the question of affidavit of title, which is something that obviously has not been provided, 10 days before, or one day before, or one minute before.
Okay, so we have two issues in front of us. One is the chronology. We have to establish that once and for all. And the second is whether what we did receive constitutes completeness in terms of the checklist and in terms of our definitions of completeness. So, Sal, you're the only one who can, or hopefully, between you and Ojetti, decide or just elaborate for us what was received and when, literally what was received, so that at least all the board members can be in agreement on what was received and the timing on it.
On December 26, we received a cover letter from Ms. Bud, and a report from Clark L. Cornwell III, counselor-at-law, and I believe this is what you're referring to?
Yes, and also you received the backup documentation.
What?
All of the title search stuff. The deeds and all that kind of stuff. This, that. That was with it.
When was this received? These documents, Patrick?
Right.
We received from you
Right. Well, my recollection is, is we received the letter of December 21 saying there was a title report. I called council to say, do you have the title report? I have the opinion letter. Where are the backup documents? And council informed me that she had backup documents, not a full report, but backup documents. I asked her to send those to me. She did send those to me by separate email on December 28. That's my recollection of the chronology.
Okay, you may be correct, but what I'm saying to you is, what you asked me for was, as I understood it, you wanted a title opinion. You wanted to know for sure that the title was clear, and that's what we had done by Mr. Cornwall, to tell you exactly what was in the title and where we stood with the restrictions, et cetera.
So, we just want to establish, I'm sorry to interrupt, but what we want to simply establish first off is that whatever we did receive, what we're going to now think about, we did receive in time, and I think the opinion is that we did or did not.
What we received, we received in time, but what could be argued quite clearly is that what we received was not a title report, nor was it an affidavit of title. It was an opinion letter and documents.
That's what we're going to argue next.
But before you had said to me, you wanted an opinion letter. You had asked me for that, when we talked before, which is what I gave.
Let's just put direct, if he received on the 28th, 29th, 30th, 31st
The 28th is 10 days before.
Right.
Literally, exactly.
To this day, it's 10 days before.
So, whether or not it came to Ojetti or it came
Doesn't matter.
To Patrick.
It's 10 days.
It was in the possession of the village.
Right. That wouldn't matter, whether or not it went to her.
Okay. So, can we, as a board, agree that we did receive the documents in time?
We received the documents provided by council 10 days before. Correct. The next question becomes whether or not the documents received by council constitute what was required under the checklist, which is
That is exactly the question I was going to So, that is the question I'd like the board to take up right now, which is, again, we should start with Pat, whether or not he feels that the, these documents
I had the same question, Mr. Chairman. So, I looked at the checklist, and if you notice, on the checklist, item number six, it says deed and affidavit of title for lands being conveyed for protection, covenants, deed restrictions, road widening, site triangles, open space, recreation, utilities, and easements. And while we did receive deeds and some restrictive covenants, we didn't receive, and haven't received, an affidavit of title or any of those other items. And so, that's why I said it
What do you mean by, what do you mean by an affidavit of title? I mean, I know of an affidavit of title when you sell a piece of property. Is that what you mean?
No, I mean, affidavit title you usually get when you order a title report indicates that who the owner is and
In other words, you want a full title report as opposed to, that's not what I understood when I talked to you last time, because you had said to me that a letter, when I, not when I talked to you, when I was here at the board, you had said originally that you wanted a letter from me about restrictions. I sent you a letter, you said that wasn't sufficient, that I should provide the backup information, which is what I did. And now you're saying to me you want more than that?
I think the question is whether or not what we have satisfies what the checklist requires. That's the question.
Well, let me ask a naive question. What, the purpose of this particular item in the checklist is to establish ownership of the property? I take it
That's one of them, yes.
Conclusive ownership, so that we can actually act on the application.
Right. If there's ever a doubt, then you have a title report, no.
And in your opinion, does what we received establish conclusive ownership?
There's a deed, certainly, yes. Would a title insurance company reinsure with that? Probably not. They'd have to do a full search. We don't have a full search or an affidavit of title. Again, it's a technical issue regarding completeness.
Okay.
It's there.
Mr. Chair, at our December meeting, I believe it was said that typically land use controls such as easement, covenants, deed restrictions, et cetera, are not a matter for this board. It's a litigation matter, it's not our matter. I would suggest that, very frankly, they have submitted proof of ownership.
Yeah, yeah.
And I for one am prepared to accept the proof of ownership. The matter of deed restrictions or title restrictions or what have you, that I don't believe is for the planning board to consider, based on our conversation we had in December.
That is correct.
But is it part of the completeness review? Can we deem an application complete without that?
Well, that's, my feeling is, I mean, if we're looking for affidavit, proof of ownership, I think they have furnished that. If we're looking for deed restrictions and so forth, I think it matters not.
But then
It's not our purpose to review that, from what I understand.
We have, we have provided you with everything that we have.
Well, I'm just
No, I'm just, I'm just sort of
I'm not trying to
Well, I mean, to be, I mean, to be frank, I mean, look
Well, I mean, to be frank, I mean, look, the checklist says what it is that's supposed to be provided. I mean, even before you walk into the room, it says, and I'm not saying whether or not, I mean, we decide, just as we decided a few minutes ago with the Seton Hall application, that we can say that we're willing to defer on certain things or decide that they're not necessarily important, but that the checklist itself, which the applicant, which you had to submit, specifically references affidavit of title. If you don't, I mean, if you don't, and it references all the other things that our council just read, so if you don't, you know, if somebody doesn't know, if an applicant doesn't know what those things are, it's incumbent upon the applicant to figure that out and to ask the questions.
To your position, right.
I'm not saying whether or not, I'm not saying whether or not we should or shouldn't. All I'm saying is, you keep saying we provided what you asked, that every applicant before this board and before the Board of Adjustment receives the same checklist with the same documents. And if there are any questions, they're always available, you know, our professionals are always available to meet with them. Not providing them or saying, I don't understand, or whatever, is not, in my estimation, inadequate. Now, again, I think that Mr. Miller also has some very good points about whether or not it's necessarily relevant to the case, but I'm just trying to say, the line of argument you're using is not a persuasive line of argument because, in all honesty, you had the checklist. If you had a question about it or you didn't understand it, you should have gotten clarification. You didn't do that, and you submitted something that is short of what is clearly stated in the checklist, stated, written, not like a discussion. It doesn't matter what was discussed. It matters what's clearly in the checklist.
And that is why I presented the letter, gave you the letter, going over the title and going through it and showing what's there and what isn't there. And that's really why the letter is there.
Dan.
The question for me is whether or not the board has the ability to make a decision against its own categorical decisions, which is, this is what's on the checklist, because if you do it for A, you can do it for B. So it seems to me that we are safest to live by category, and if the category hasn't been met, the category hasn't been met. Now, the substance of the matter may be that we know the answer to the question, but if you don't put it on the right piece of paper, you didn't meet the category.
Well, that's why, as I say, that is why I submitted the opinion letter along with the documentation.
Is there a problem getting an affidavit of title?
I'm sorry.
Is there a...
Of course not. I mean, we just, we'd have to do that, but I submitted the opinion letter along with everything that was given to us by the title company. I figured the opinion letter was better than an abstract.
Mr. Chairman?
The reason that I understood that we were requesting the title report, which would
contain an affidavit of title, and also the, you know, the deeds and any covenants and the deeds and so forth, which we discussed expressly...
Which you have.
With, well, not the title report.
No, but you have the other... Well, I consider the letter a title report.
Yeah, see, and that's one of the reasons why I feel strongly about my recollection of what we actually requested, which was in line with what's on the checklist, and that's because when I received, and you have to realize, the board received these in two different packages. The first one containing the opinion letter and so forth, and the second containing the backup material that our attorney requested, which we only got just a few days ago. The village may have received it in 10 days, but we didn't receive it in 10 days. But when I received your counsel's opinion, I just thought, well, I mean, the last thing I'm going to do is rely on the applicant's attorney's opinion about this, because whether, I mean, it's certainly a subject of whether the covenant comes into play in our substantive decision or not. However, it's the very race of thing that's being proposed to be demolished, whether there's a covenant that relates to it and so forth. So all of those were questions in my mind, and that's one of the reasons why I wanted to be satisfied and why the application for completeness was specifically conditioned on compliance with this category, as my colleague called it.
Well, of course, I felt like I complied with it.
So getting the opinions counsel, I mean, I'm going to rely on his counsel.
Well, I felt I complied with it, based on the opinion. I also, no matter what is in that opinion, and if, no matter what it says, the planning board, it's not the forum for deciding whether this is agreed or not agreed. It's got to be the courts, and the planning board can't rely on this and can't make its decision based on this.
I completely agree with that. However, that's not the purpose of the checklist and the items in the category within the checklist, which some of us at least are saying was not sufficient in your package that was delivered to us, either package. So, that's my view. It's because those questions are in my mind, not because we're going to be the arbiter of those things. That'll probably be decided, as you say, in superior court.
Look, I have one question just regarding this whole thing, in regards to the deeds, covenants, easements, not from a legal perspective, but from the application perspective, that when you're talking of when you have to come with us for the soil disturbance and all that, none of that's going to happen unless the building gets demolished. So, we're then deciding everything hypothetically, because we don't know, in essence, whether the building can be demolished or not at this point in time. So then, we're looking at everything for the soil disturbance and the grading and what's going to happen, based upon an assumption, or hypothetically, if the building can come down or not, which you then say is possibly going to be decided somewhere else. So, I think it's important, even though it may not legally be our purview to decide whether, you know, that affects it or not, I think it's important for us to know, from your opinion and whosever's opinion, of whether that's relevant or not, because I think then we're just spinning our wheels. You know, not to take offense to that, but I just think, you know, we don't really know what we're dealing with, and that's what I think we wanted clarification from.
You're dealing with a simple application to take a building down. Nothing more complex than that. You're not dealing with anything else. The property is going to be, the building's going to be taken down. It's going to be graded and seed and, you know, all the things, so that it'll then look, it'll be a piece of property.
Well, I just have to disagree a little bit with my colleague. I think procedurally, we first have to establish, once and for all, whether we have a complete application. Once we do that, then we can spend all the time we want, and there's certainly a lot of people here interested in the outcome of this, on whether or not we're going to approve this application or not. What would be your concern about coming back in a month with an affidavit of title, so that we can deem this complete?
It's just another month.
Yes, I know, but...
And that's, and that, you know, the building's been ready for demolition for a while now.
I know, but in all fairness to my board, we're not holding you up.
Well, I feel like I've complied with what you wanted.
All right, I think we've, do I have another opinion on whether or not we feel that the checklist has been met or not, or do we want to discuss it anymore before we decide on vote? Is there any more to... Do any board people, board members, who would like to ask questions about this, clarify things in your mind?
Again, the lead, to me, falls to our council. Our council has got to be satisfied that what we approve...
Use your microphone, Michael.
What we approve for completion, subject to, was that fulfilled? If it was fulfilled, then I'd like to hear our council say it was fulfilled. If our council has doubts and it wasn't fulfilled, then I'd like to hear that too.
I agree. I think, Pat, this is where we need to follow your lead.
All right, I had, I thought I had tried to cover that early on when I said, technically speaking, there's a checklist requirement that has not been completely fulfilled. Whether or not the board wants to waive that requirement is up to the board, but that's what the checklist requires, and it hasn't been fulfilled.
So, I'm going to make a motion so as to bring this to a head. Okay, I'm going to move that the application be deemed complete. I will second it.
Okay, let's have a roll call, please.
Mr. Brown?
No.
Mr. Colton Max?
No.
Ms. Foye?
No.
Ms. Bauer?
No.
Mr. Hutt?
No.
Mr. Miller?
No.
Reverend Wilson?
No.
Ms. Guhar?
No.
Mr. Allen?
No.
And Mr. Goldstein?
No.
Okay.
Hold it.
Can we talk about the other issue too while you're here?
Excuse me. How many people voted? I believe we have 10 members?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. We have to only have nine votes? So, first alternate? Danny and Elliot are alternates.
I don't care. Either one of us is, we have the same votes.
Just take them off the roll call. He just wants to make sure it's done properly.
I appreciate that. We are into proper this evening.
I don't think it changes the outcome much. It does not.
So, just to summarize for the public, so what this means is that the board has found the application not complete yet. We're asking the applicant to come back in a month with the appropriate documents to complete the checklist. This is a procedural issue that is very important to the process that we go through, so that we can hear applications appropriately.
And I would ask if you have a full title report, that would be appreciated.
We have a full title report. You just don't have the cover sheet. I mean, that's why I sent, gave you the letter.
So you, I think, counsel, you clearly know what we need then, right?
Yes.
Okay. Did you have any other questions?
Yes.
Okay.
I would like to, again, argue about the certificate of appropriateness to the Board of Historical Preservation Committee.
I think, because...
Ms. Bud, I would only say that that argument's not right yet. We don't have the complete application.
But it seems to me that if you're requesting this, that I should have the opportunity to at least discuss it, so that I could find out. I mean, I don't think that it's, that because this was not designated historical properties until in December, I do not think that this is appropriate. It seems to me that it's going to hold it up another month if I don't have some kind of answer.
Okay.
I mean, that's, I'm just...
So let us, we'll start with both, either our counsel or our planner, at least they can give you some feedback on this issue that you're...
Mr. Chairman, I'm baffled. If the application is not deemed complete, how can we start talking about the merits of the application? Or what decision is going to be made? I mean, isn't that sort of the basis? I mean, if an application is not deemed complete, we cannot go any further in discussing the application itself. That's the whole basis for having the completeness hearing.
But I have, but I have something here requesting me to do something else that I do not think is appropriate.
But that would be, I mean, my contention, Mr. Chairman, my contention would be that that would be discussed at the next meeting. We get the title report, and that we have this very discussion. You're absolutely right. This issue has to be discussed. I mean, if we get to completeness, which I'm sure we will in February, but, and at that time, I would think that's the time to have this discussion, but I don't understand, if an application is incomplete, how you can have a discussion of the merits of the application and what should be done as it relates to the substance of the application. That's sort of the underlying premise of what completeness is, isn't it?
True, we can't hear the merits of the application. It's more or less a procedural motion. The board doesn't want to hear it now. It doesn't have to. The application's not complete yet. I understand your concern about what will happen if it is deemed complete, but we're not there yet.
I'm going to go back to what I said before. If I have to go before the Historical Preservation Committee, this, even if, Commission, excuse me, even if you deem it complete next time, that means you will not hear it. I am trying to understand why I have to go before the Historical Preservation Commission. That's what I'm trying to understand, that, when we were not designated a historical zone until December.
Well, I think Mr. Colton Max is right. We're really not there yet. You haven't been referred to the HPC yet. Right?
I don't know how much weight your planner's memo has.
Well, the planner has a memo recommending a certain action by the board, which you've been way aware of, but the board hasn't taken that action yet, so...
One other comment I would make is that I think we're very well aware of your position, and my guess is between now and then, our legal counsel, if he has not already done so, and the planner, perhaps, will be examining that very specific subject. Your point is that you submitted the application before the Historic Preservation Commission, before this property was added to the list, and therefore you believe that it should not be, that it's not appropriate for us to be referred to that. I think we got that, and we're definitely going to be ready at the next meeting. I sure hope so. We're going to be ready at the next meeting to address that. So, you're not, you're not going to be wasting your time at the next meeting in that sense, and I'm not sure that we're ready, quite frankly, to address that tonight. If I couldn't get a clear answer as to whether or not your legal argument is correct, I wouldn't be in a position to vote tonight, and I'd still tell them to put it off for another month. So, I don't think it's, I mean, in all fairness, I don't think it's really any different whether or not we start this discussion tonight, which I don't think we can complete, or whether or not we wait until next month, when we would take up the conversation again and when we would be ready to complete it. Either way, February seems the time to have the discussion.
But I would add, Ms. Bud, if you want to provide the board with a memo...
I will.
...about your position and distribute it, you know, 10 days ahead, that might be helpful.
Yes, I will.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Just whether the neighbors get notified or not, is the application already?
It hasn't, the application hasn't been deemed complete yet, so there is no hearing available yet. In my opinion, it needs to be re-noticed, because it hasn't been, it hasn't been deemed complete.
It will be re-noticed.
It will be re-noticed.
But count on it being on the next...
Yes.
...February meeting of the planning board, which is...
February 4th.
February 4th.
February 4th.
7:30.
Oh, we will need to do some other...
Yes.
Yeah. I can't see who's talking.
Okay, okay. So, we're going to move on in our agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'm assuming that many of the people here were here for that specific purpose of hearing that application.
So we'll let you leave.
Take a moment, please, as to...
Oh, you can watch the local government work if you stay.
Put a TV up. Put a TV up.
I forgot. I forgot. What? What? Yeah, you're getting close. I get to leave.
We look weird, yes.
Therapy is a killer.
I rescued myself at the last...
If we do discussion items first...
Yeah, if you want to do discussion items first, and then I can stay for that, leave.
We're going to, everybody, if they could, leave as quickly as you can, because we do have...
I appreciate if everybody leaves as quickly.
As they can, thank you. Oh, we turned everybody off. It's good to see people around. Thank you, Harold.
Could you see the article in the other day about this woman?
They made me leave the building.
Really?
Yes.
It's okay.
It's okay.
Don't knock him.
We really have to, okay.
Nebraska is set to play Alabama.
Yeah.
The University of Alabama, they built it after the...
All right. Thank you, everybody. If you could...
I can hear the game.
All right. We're back, thank you. Everybody could leave quietly, I appreciate it. All right, we are going to resume the planning board meeting, and we are going to hear case number 224. It's Bianca's LLC. This is a continuation from December 3rd, 2012. It's Block 1901, Lot 16, 11-13 Church Street. This is an application for preliminary and final site plan. The applicant is seeking variances from 92-198 bulk requirements and the Church Street redevelopment plan. Counsel.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Again, for the record, my name is Jay Bone, an attorney with the law firm of Schiller and Pittninger, PC. We have with us an architect, it's not the same architect you've heard before, it's from the same office, so he will have to be sworn.
Can you please bring the microphone closer?
So he will have to be sworn and qualified...
Thank you.
...before we begin his testimony.
Counsel?
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you give this evening is the whole truth?
I do.
Please state your name and address for the record.
John C. Inglaze, I-N-G-L-E-S-E. My address is 150 Union Avenue, East Rutherford, New Jersey. This is an application for preliminary and final site plan. The applicant is seeking variances from 92-198 bulk requirements and the Church Street redevelopment plan. Counsel.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Again, for the record, my name is Jay Bone, an attorney with the law firm of Schiller and Pittinger, PC. We have with us an architect, it's not the same architect you've heard before, it's from the same office, so he will have to be sworn.
Can you please bring the microphone closer?
So he will have to be sworn and qualified...
Thank you.
Before we begin his testimony.
Counsel.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you give this evening is the whole truth?
I do.
Please state your name and address for the record.
John C. Inglaze, I-N-G-L-E-S-E. My address is 150 Union Avenue, East Rutherford, New Jersey, and I'm the principal on the firm of Inglaze Architecture and Engineering. And will you tell the board your licensing and education as it relates to architecture? Certainly. I am a registered architect in the state of New Jersey and have been since 1983. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey and have been since 1984. I have a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering from New Jersey Institute of Technology. I have a Bachelor of Architecture degree from the same institution, and I have a Master of Science in Civil Engineering from the same institution. And have you testified before boards of adjustment and planning boards in the state of New Jersey? Yes, I have. Have you ever testified before this board? You know, I think I have, but it's probably been in excess of 15 years, so I wouldn't recognize anyone, and you probably wouldn't recognize me. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, we'll accept his credentials. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you go ahead and tell the board the changes that have been made to the plans since the last meeting, with particular emphasis on the issues that the board identified? Certainly. And I'll go sheet by sheet. What I have in front of me is one set of drawings, which is the same set that's been submitted to the board. The first sheet is T-100, title sheet, and the change on this sheet was, the zoning chart was updated. The zoning chart was updated to show correct impervious coverages for options 1 and 2. And the side yard setback has been modified slightly, and we'll get into that when we get to the site plan. Originally, the drawings indicated that the smallest side yard, which was to the isolated column supporting the beams across the driveway, were two and a half feet from the property line. They are two feet from the property line, and that's been corrected on the zoning chart. The second sheet, C-100, the survey and the site plan have been modified. Survey obviously hasn't changed at all. The site plan has changed in a couple of ways. The four proposed air conditioning condensers, which were originally at the back of the parking lot, were pulled to alongside the upper part of the building, essentially 15 feet further east. And as I just mentioned, there are three columns that support the beams over the driveway, and those columns were pulled in slightly so that they were completely clear of the curb, to make them less likely to be hit by a vehicle, and that resulted in them being two feet from the property line, as opposed to the two and a half feet that was shown originally. Those are the only two changes on the site plan sheet. When you go to the third sheet, C-110, that shows the grading and drainage plan in two separate scenarios. The scenario, we're calling option 1 on the, on the left, is asphalt pavement with a subsurface recharge system of perforated pipe and a controlled outlet to, an emergency outlet to the curb. And option 2 is keeping asphalt pavement just where the parking spaces, the physical parking spaces are, which makes it easier to stripe them and identify them, and the remainder of the, of the parking area being paved with a segmental cast concrete permeable paver system, which is essentially a grid of octagon, octagonal pavers with a diamond space between them that's filled with small stone, and the pavers themselves have spacers for stone between them, and it allows more water to drain directly into the subsurface.
Excuse me, what are the, what are they set on, all the pavers?
The, the pavers are set on three layers of increasingly graded stone.
Okay.
And that's shown on the site detail sheet, which is C-200. There's been added a permeable paver detail, so there's a setting bed below them, and then two increasingly large size stones. So, I'll go back to, so, essentially, we have two options here. Our preferable option is option 2, using the permeable pavers. They, that option also has the roof leaders connected to a subsurface dry well, so that the roof drainage is still put back into the soil with an emergency overflow to the curb. But obviously, we would defer to the engineer on the board, but if it were our choice, we would choose option 2, which is the permeable pavers. I just think it's a better looking solution, and it actually eliminates a variance in that, because of the density, you're not permitted to have any impervious surface applying in the rear yard. This one doesn't do that. And of course, the impervious coverage variance itself is done away with as well? Well, the impervious, the impervious coverage is less. It's 75 percent with the, with the, with the permeable pavers. 70 is the, is the requirement. The property right now is 100 percent, so either option reduces the amount of impervious coverage, but it does less. I'm sorry, on our zoning chart, we have the requirement of 70 percent impervious coverage.
Yes, but this proposal is confusing. There's 70 percent.
Yes, I stand corrected. 75 percent was with the first option, and this would then eliminate the impervious coverage variance.
So you're in favor of option number 2?
Option number 2 eliminates both variances, the coverage, the impervious coverage variance, and having impervious, having impervious surface in the rear setback.
Got it. All right, continue. Thank you.
The next sheet is C-120, which has the fencing and landscaping plan and the lighting plan. This has been modified, the lighting, the fencing plan's been modified to pull the side fence on the south side further down to enclose the AC condensers, which were pulled down. The fence at the rear is shown as either a board-on-board or a solid vinyl fence. That was a point in the planner's most recent report as to which fence we're going to use at the back. I had a conversation with my client before this tonight, and essentially, either one of those two types of fence would be acceptable to him. He would prefer to use the vinyl fence for maintenance, but we've shown the detail for either type, and at the board's discretion, we can do either. They're both a privacy, they're both a solid privacy fence. One is wood, one is vinyl. And then the other option, I mean, the other change here is the north side fence, the long side property fence, has been shown to be a four-foot-high wrought iron fence, and there's detail of that on, again, sheet 200. It's a very simple four-foot-high wrought iron fence that matches the one wrought iron fence that's on the church property. It's adjacent to us, there, one wrought iron fence. On the, on the lighting plan, we've done a new lighting analysis and modified it. The original lighting inaccurately showed the values on the north side, as if there were a solid fence there. Now that there's a four-foot wrought iron fence, we've modeled it with a porous fence here, so that the lighting levels that you see on the right side are accurate. There is some spillage into the driveway immediately to the north of us, but at, at most, it's .7-foot candles, and for the whole periphery, it's probably more like .4-foot candles, and that's into active driveway. And we've also added details of the two light fixtures that are composed, decorative lantern fixtures that are on, on the front, and the wall-mounted lighting for the parking area, which is the L1. And we've also added, this is also for landscaping, yes. This, the landscape changes as well, primarily to show the ivy that's being planted at the base of the three columns that span over the driveway. There's, there's English ivy being planted at the base of both of those columns with the intent of training that up over the upper column over the... The, the next sheet, which is the soil erosion seventh control plan, really hasn't changed except for the background, in terms of where the columns sit and where the, the exhibition on the jump this one, so we're very, essentially, no change to the soil erosion seventh control plan. The detail sheet has been modified to add the detail of the wrought iron, fourth of wrought iron fence. I believe it had the two privacy fence details on it previously, and you did the permeable paper detail as well. The next sheet, the architectural, the second series of site details has not changed. It's all the drainage detail stuff that it did before. The next sheet is the architectural floor plans. No change to this. The next sheet is the elevations, and here, what we've done is more accurately showed the brick-enclosed columns and the rough-sawn cedar-enclosed beams standing over the driveway. There were three beams. You actually see them sort of stepping this front elevation, because they're at different moments, because of the way the site slopes, and because the units step up in the floor plan. And you can see that, in the rear elevation, you see that as well, the column, the light, the fence, the ivy, and, and the beams. I apologize for spelling beam twice.
Once we would have forgiven you, but...
Yes, that's the problem with computers. If you do something stupid once, you can then copy it through.
Okay. Thank you.
And then we've got the details of the closure for the column. And I believe that's shown again on the side elevation. You can see the three columns and how the side steps up. And the wrought iron fence is shown in this view now. And you see again the, the column and the beam. This is more of a composite elevation of the buildings alongside of us, so this is very similar to, to the first elevation, which doesn't change. And that's essentially what we've done between the last...
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I think that we've now addressed all the points that the board asked us to last time, and there are, of course, open for questions from the board and the public at this time.
Okay.
Sal?
Just getting back to the site plan, the wrought iron fence?
Mm-hmm.
It looks like on the plan, you're showing it going out to the street?
Uh, yes, it's going, it's shown right now going right to the, the front property line.
Okay, I would recommend that, that it be brought back to be in line with the building. And if you look at the elevation drawing, that it does show it. It looks like the fence is stopping. Yeah. It appears to be stopping at the...
At the face of the building.
Face of the building. I would recommend that you just...
Yes, that makes sense.
You keep it in line with, because by ordinance, fences aren't permitted in a front yard. So, if you just stop it at the edge of the building, it should be fine.
Okay.
Susan, board, any thoughts? Any comments on option 1 or option 2 regarding, I mean, do we, if they favor the option 2, and it's not a variance, it seems pretty straightforward? Thought the lighting was pretty straightforward, answered our issues?
Looks very nice, thank you.
Only question is whether we want wood or vinyl fence. I have no problem with it.
With the vinyl?
Vinyl was less maintenance, so we'll help them.
Can we just, can we say, can we approve either or, whatever their choice is?
I don't have a problem.
I think we have no more comments. Do we have any comments from a public? John Q. or otherwise? No? Okay.
I'll move the application.
A second?
Sorry.
Roll call.
Okay, Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Colton Beck?
Yes.
Ms. Troy?
I'm going to abstain, because I missed the first hearing in March. It was very...
Ms. Bauer?
It was the third time.
Yes. Mr. Hutt?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Gouha?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
And Mr. Goldstein?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel, and thank your client. We appreciate all the effort they've made in coming forward and answering our questions and responding to our comments. Okay. So, we have a few minor items, and let's see what we want to do about all that. The first is, under discussion, is a draft definition recommendation to board trustees. We've provided new definitions, but I would like to postpone that discussion until next month, and without any...
Can we just keep postponing?
I think they get realer each time, they get more... The next is ordinance number 2012-24, approving the Valley and Third Streets redevelopment plan, which amends and replaces Central Business District redevelopment plan for block 2304, lots 39, and partially supersedes the South Orange development and zoning ordinances. Let's just hold on that very briefly, let's hold that thought. The selection of the planner, we have been asked by the BOT to put together a joint committee with, including zoning, planning, and the BOT, and if we have any volunteers, two or three, we would be part of that composition of that committee, so if anybody in our... Michael, you had felt that you would be willing...
I'd volunteer, yes.
Do I, anybody? Danny? I think that's all we needed, and I would be part of... Oh, and Janine, you want to be on that, right? But you're going to come through?
Here.
You volunteer? Okay, so we, we will at least have three, Ojettie. The selection of a consultant engineer, I wrote in an email this afternoon that what we are looking for is a, essentially, a consultant to help the board when we are presented with projects of a significant scale, which Sal needs some backup, basically, and, and technical backup as well. He received four RFPs, I believe?
Yes.
And you, you were making a recommendation to go with Amland Engineering?
Yes.
And you wanted to speak briefly to why you would recommend them?
Yeah, the, the four firms that we received proposals from were Amland Engineering, Van Cleef Engineering, Suburban Engineering, and Materazzo Engineering. Of the four, I believe, Amland, and the, the price range is all very comparable, you know, you know, very close to the same, but of the four, Amland Engineering will provide traffic engineering support for circulation and things like that, whereas the other three firms don't provide that. They all have municipal experience, they all have planning board, zoning board experience, they've all done municipal projects and municipal work. With the exception of Suburban, all of them have actually done work for the village, so, but for the reason that these larger applications, Seaton Hall, and perhaps if the redevelopment project on Third comes about, there will be traffic elements associated with that, and it would be good to have a firm that can provide traffic engineering support. And that's why I would recommend Amland Engineering. They would be used on an as-needed basis, when, you know, when we get a large application and it's, you know, gets beyond the scope that, you know, where we can do it in-house. At, at that time, we would, we'd request them to review the application and provide reports and, and testimony at the meeting.
So their remuneration is on a per-project basis?
Yes, it would be, yeah. As determined by the board, we need, you know, we need them, then, you know, we will contact them.
And they're paid through the developer's escrow.
And it's paid through the developer's escrow, correct?
Mr. Chairman, I was unaware that Amland Engineering is being considered, since my organization is currently using them. I would have to abstain from any vote on this.
Can I just, I don't have a problem if we go with that, I would just ask counsel to prepare a resolution, formally doing it, so that we comply with full public contracts, just going down the pipe. We can vote for it now, but I, you know, or agree to it, but would ask them to formally do it by resolution.
Sure.
So how do we, how do we propose to vote, then? Do we have to do our own brief resolution?
Well, I mean, if it's wanted by consensus...
Consensus.
We could do that, and then have a formal resolution at the next meeting.
Recommend their, their...
Are we going to have anything for the next meeting that you need to use in between now and February?
Seaton Hall.
I was going to say, that's the question I was going to ask.
Well, we can do it, and then we can do the resolution to confirm what it was.
Okay.
We can send them the application if you vote for them.
Yeah, if, if the board's on, then tomorrow, we'll contact them and send them the application.
So do, are we actually making a resolution here, or just a consensus vote? What are we, what are we actually doing?
In order to move, the board will pass a resolution.
Okay, so we will need someone to voice a resolution here?
I'll move the resolution that we, was it Amli?
Amland.
Amland. We retain as a consulting engineer...
Second?
On, on, on call as is needed basis.
Okay. Second? Do I hear a second?
I'll second it, and I just, I don't know what this relates to with respect to the planning board, but the Board of Trustees for Professional Services now wants the criteria essentially set forth in a matrix, so the criteria is that their price was competitive with all the others, that they have worked for the village before and been satisfactory, and that they included traffic engineering services, and none of the other applicants did, and therefore...
Yeah, if the board's on, then tomorrow we'll contact them and send them the application.
So are we actually making a resolution here or just a consensus vote? What are we actually doing?
In order to move, the board will pass a resolution.
Okay, so we will need someone to voice a resolution here.
How move the resolution? Is it Amli?
Amland.
A-M-L-I-N-G.
Amland.
Second.
We retain as a consulting engineer.
Second?
On call as is needed basis.
Okay, second? Do I hear a second?
I'll second it, and I just, I don't know what this relates to with respect to the planning board, but the Board of Trustees for Professional Services now wants the criteria essentially set forth in a matrix. So the criteria is that their price was competitive with all the others, that they have worked for the village before and been satisfactory, and that they included traffic engineering services, and none of the other applicants did, and therefore, they were deemed by the village engineer to be superior. Will you accept that?
Sure, yes.
Okay.
Okay, so let's do a roll call, Ojettie?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Foye?
Yes.
Mr. B, Ms. Bauer?
Yes.
Mr. Hutt?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Guha?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
And Mr. Goldstein.
We didn't share at all, so we're going to wait on that. So let's, because I'm procedurally not clear what to do about the selection of attorney, I'm going to postpone that decision from the board or what do I do?
I think you should talk to the chairman of the zoning board and see if you guys want to look at the applications or renominate your current counsel.
Okay.
Do we have other applications?
We do. Long, long.
Who were they? It was Patrick and then I don't remember who the other one was.
Can't hear you. They can't hear you.
Ojettie?
Regal, Patrick, and I can't remember the other one.
Can I make a suggestion that if you're asking the board to select 103, that you send all three, the credentials of all three to the board?
Exactly.
So, you know, at least it's not on an arms-length basis.
Sure, we can do that. Ojettie, can you send that three so that on next February, we can make that the first piece of action?
Okay.
Is that timely enough or are you running out of...
I am running out of time.
All right, is that okay?
Can I just go back to the question about planner? Do you have a timetable with the...
I haven't heard of one, no. We're going to have to talk to the zoning chair.
So we're just going to continue and, I mean, are we suggesting that it goes?
Think of that as a continuing resolution in case of a death seal.
Didn't we use an RFP?
And a shutdown threat.
No, I just...
You should be very familiar with that.
Yeah, no, we have our RFP responses. It's just they didn't want, they wanted to just make a little joint committee and, I guess, make, feel it is...
Did we get any responses?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, we got several.
We did. But we haven't seen any of them.
No.
I mean, we haven't even seen any.
No, they were all sent to the chairman.
Right, right. The only reason I know is...
The old black hole. But, I mean, yeah, but I was told then that it's actually going to be a small group that's going to roll through it, so I didn't...
Can you just educate us when you say a small group?
No, that's fine. I'm just saying.
Three members from the PB, three members from the BOT.
The PB, okay, I understand, okay.
All right.
Can I volunteer for that?
Yes. So I will, we will find out when that first meeting is, I assume it's going to be very soon, and hopefully, that will also be decided by February.
I have no idea because I'm not on the Planning and Zoning Committee of the Board of Trustees. However, that committee meets before, do you have any idea whether it's the second or fourth?
Third Wednesday, I think it is.
Oh, no, they meet before the board, so it's either the second Monday or the fourth Monday.
No, planning board's been changed. It's the third Wednesday.
Planning and zoning?
Planning and zoning, yes. It was changed.
Oh, I didn't know that. Okay. I think it's the third Wednesday. Okay, well, then I have no idea. I'll see one tomorrow.
Can you send us a schedule and anybody who's volunteered will... If we come, if we're four... So raise your hand again. Michael?
If you don't need me, I'll un-volunteer.
Dani and Janine? That's fine, four is good. Five, four?
To me, the more the merrier, but, you know, whatever.
All right, so I'll come. So if you could send out the schedule, we'll make sure to show...
Yes, just send out a date.
Okay. And we will then, who's going to send around the attorney RFPs? Ojettie, you will do that?
Yes.
And I want the board to, that we need to vote on that next week, next month.
As well as for the zoning.
So we'll get their recommendation too. All right. The last issue then is the ordinance that we spoke about that's been distributed. The revised version has been distributed. Does the board want to discuss that tonight? Are you prepared to discuss that tonight?
I'm sorry, what? Third Street?
The Third Street ordinance.
Was it distributed?
I feel maybe we need to postpone that as well, if not prepared.
My question was, is that I'm not sure of this, was did they...
Let's talk, what happened? Maybe you can tell.
Take into account all of our recommendations.
So you did not?
Perhaps, yeah.
We did take into account, however, we did not agree with everything. 20-foot right-of-way along the railroad became 15 feet. The developer was, really said it was economically impossible to have the higher story setback that, you know, for aesthetic and other purposes that the board recommended. So that went away. And it strikes me there was a third thing.
He couldn't contain the facade on the, couldn't enclose the facade.
Nobody telling the facade, they just go for a screening down on that around the outside of the building level.
So are these, are these itemizes, changes?
The major part of our recommendations were not taken.
There were two major, what I believe, what I would consider to be major. One is, as Janine said, the 15 feet. The other was the 15 feet where if you got an extra story, you had to offset the 25 feet from Valley Street is still there.
Correct.
The other one is, but the 15 feet along any of the other three sides was deleted.
Right, that was deleted.
What action are we supposed to take on this now?
There was a maximum of about 55 feet from all?
Yeah, 55 feet is still the overall height above Valley Street.
Right, that's still the same.
This was, this is my understanding. It was reintroduced with these, or it was reintroduced with these changes. And so, since they were changed from the original recommendations from this board, it has to come back to this board as a referral because it's changed substantially enough from what this board sent to the Board of Trustees.
So when you reissued this back to us, did you highlight or itemize the changes?
There are, there...
There's a summary on it.
A summary?
There's a summary on it.
And then inside document, you can see the outlines.
I'm trying to figure out what the purpose of having another conversation is. There were recommendations made, the board chose, you know, to accept some and reject others. They made a considered decision. We go back to them and say, we reiterate our, you know, hey, but that's, you know, it's not, I don't understand what the purpose is. So we made our recommendations, you know.
Yeah, so what's our action? What do we do?
By our recommendations?
The board is going to comment on the proposed legislation.
Yeah, I mean, by law, it has to come back to us, so even though I agree with you, I mean...
Okay, can we just say that we reiterate the same comments and give it back to the Board of Trustees for their reconsideration and tell them that we're disappointed? No.
Sounds good.
Do we have to be more formal than that, or do you draft something up or distribute it?
Do you want to, do we need a motion? I move that we respond to the ordinance number 2012-24 by reiterating the points made at the, previously by the planning board and with the request that the Board of Trustees reconsider its decision on those issues.
All right, second?
Second.
On favor? I oppose. Okay, that's what we'll send back to them. Thank you, Harold, for your eloquence. I don't think we have anything else.
One thing, I believe that Daviana and Allison need to do the oath because they came in after that.
Oh, publicly?
That's up to the chairman. They missed that one.
In a four-part harmony.
Or two-part harmony.
All right. You mean, I?
Go. Okay. I, Allison Brown, do hereby sign, swear, or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same, to the government established in the United States and in this state under the authority of the Constitution. I defer solemnly swear, affirm, that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties as a member of the South Orange Planning Board according to the best of my ability.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
I think that's all for tonight. We're meeting again February what? Ojettie?
Happy New Year.
Yes, everybody, thank you very much.